We welcome you to this forum featuring the candidates who are running for Robinsdale Mayor, City Councils Ward 1 and 2, and Hennepin County Commissioner District 1, which includes the cities of Crystal, Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, New Hope, Oseo, and Robinsdale. Hennepin County Commissioners work with a budget of $2.5 billion and are responsible for healthcare, housing, law enforcement, libraries, transit, and infrastructure within the county. The general election will be held Tuesday, November 3rd, from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening. My name is Kathy Pedersen, and I am president of the League of Women Voters of Crystal, New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale. The League of Women Voters is proud of its history, of citizen education in our communities, and provides these forums to help you make informed decisions in local elections. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization, and we do not assume responsibility for the contents of the candidates' statements; those statements are their own. We are following CDC and MDH guidelines for public meetings and have adjusted our format to ensure the health and safety of all participants. For that reason, we do not have our customary audience present at this time. Questions from the citizens have been phoned into our League answer line or emailed to our email address. We wish to thank our moderator for this forum, Jackie Wells, who is a member of the Golden Valley League of Women Voters and resident of Golden Valley. At this time, I would like to turn the forum over to Jackie Wells.
Thank you very much, Kathy. I'm delighted to be here. Welcome to the candidate forum for Hennepin County Commissioner District 1. This first part of our forum will take place until about 12:10. The two candidates are, in alphabetical order, Jeff Lundie and Davana Pittman. Welcome. We have asked them for an opening statement telling you why each would like to serve as county commissioner and the qualifications and experiences that each has for this position. Candidates, there's a timer in front of you who will notify you at 1 minute and 30 seconds, and then when your time is up. You may finish your sentence if you see that stop sign. Jeff Lundie, would you present your opening statement of up to three minutes, please?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jeff Lundie, candidate for District 1, Hennepin County Commissioner. I believe now more than ever, we need experience in leadership. If you look at what 2020 has brought for us this year, it's been a lot of challenges, a lot of issues, and we've seen where leadership fails, when they don't have the experience to deal with problems that they have never seen before, or that they couldn't actually have faced. I believe it's important that we work to unite us. This year, presidential year, we have people dividing us. Their sole purpose is to gather power. And that's not how you get a community to work together, to face up to challenges, to care for each other. If the first thing they do is check the partisan label of their neighbor or the person that they're working with, I purposely not sought political endorsement, because I believe strongly, now more than ever, we need people who are focused on what we need to do and not about the politics of things. As mayor of Brooklyn Park, I've been focused on the root cause, tackling issues as they come, fighting sex trafficking by having a teen homeless shelter, helping to make sure that the second-largest apartment complex of affordable units switched over to being owned by a nonprofit who will make sure it's kept affordable. We did that just before COVID. Things like working with the community to provide public safety that's fair and equitable to all, that people can believe in it, helping to fight crime, because too many of the people who are victims of crime are the people who are caught in the cycle of poverty and lack of opportunity. I believe strongly in tackling those issues and facing up to those challenges, and I present my record as mayor as proof of that. I don't focus on what parties people are, but I do focus is what can help us move us forward, who can we work with, and that's how I approach things. For me, working across the party lines is not a slogan, it's a habit. And I believe that as a county commissioner, now more than ever, we need people who will work with everyone and whomever they need to, to get things done. In this divided world, people who can navigate that area to make sure that we're working with this group and that group to move things forward are rarity, and I present my record as a person who will represent you and only you and your interests as we move things forward. So I present my work as mayor of Brooklyn Park as proof of that I will live up to the talk, that I will walk it, and I will continue to fight for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Davana Pittman, would you please present your opening statement of up to three minutes?
Yes. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event today. It is very much appreciated. My name is Davana Pittman, and I live in New Hope with my husband, Robert. We've lived in the district for over 20 years. I have two children who have graduated from Oseo Senior High School. I have an 18-year career with Hennepin County where I've managed a budget in public safety of $2.5 million. I'm also a small business owner. I was born and raised in the poorest suburb of America, where people often don't make it. I moved to Minnesota over 29 years ago with a goal of creating a better life for myself, not really understanding that I would bring a better life to others. I have spent my life advocating on the ground for individuals who live in Minnesota. I am also the DFL Labor and Veterans Endorsed Candidate. I am endorsed by the people. The people understand that we need someone who has proximity to the issues that we face in our district. In District 1, in Brooklyn Park especially, we have the highest evictions in the state. As someone who has struggled with housing in my past, moving here from Fort Heights, Illinois, I understand the issues that affect people who live in our communities. As someone who has actually worked all across Hennepin County, I believe what we need is someone who understands the very intricate departments in Hennepin County and understands that we need to get to work on day one. As someone who also understands the issues that come along with not having transportation, I want to make sure that I bring different perspectives to the District 1 Board, to the County Commissioner Board. We've never had the type of perspective that I will bring to the Hennepin County Board, and so I am looking forward to the awesome opportunities that are going to come as a result of me being on the board and bringing perspective that we've never seen in District 1. I also look forward to making sure that we bring community voice into District 1 and to remove the barriers that we often see when it comes to communicating with our board and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I will ask questions that were sent in by voters to the League's email or phone for these candidates. We ask the candidates for one-minute responses, and the candidates will take turns being first to respond. We will begin with Davana Pittman. So our first question is, "The county could face significant financial constraints in 2021. What are your top two budget priorities for the next four years? Would you consider a tax levy increase, and if yes, for what initiatives?"
We know that after the, when we're done with the COVID pandemic and when we're able to really get back into the room and have conversations about solving some of these issues, I want to focus on affordable housing and homelessness, because if we don't do that, those tent cities are going to keep popping up around our district. And so we want to make sure that we take good care of people who live in our district and address the affordable housing crises that was already in place before a pandemic. I also want to focus on getting the blue line done. I am so excited about the opportunity of having new voices in the room to have those discussions, and also making sure that we consider people who live along the line and equitable opportunities that will come. And when we think about tax increases, for me, as a property owner in the district, I want to be very careful about how we do that, but we've seen, even within the last two weeks, the county have conversations and also reduced the budget, because we have been able to find different allocations in county funding, and we have to do a better job at figuring out where those dollars are without raising taxes.
Thank you. Jeff Lundie, same question, please.
Thank you. For me, the first and highest priority two items would be transit, because right now, if you do not have access to affordable transportation, you are not getting to that job, or you're not getting to education. For the Northwest Metro, we've waited way too long for people to help support the blue line, or busing, or road construction. We suffer from a lack of that kind of support, and we need someone there who's been a fighter. I've helped create the Blue Line Coalition, which is the collection of the cities in District 1, who have helped lead the fight on that and have worked, whether it's at federal level or the state. The second issue for me is housing. If you don't have access to affordable housing, if you do not have a roof over your head, you are not going to succeed in school, you're not going to succeed in life, you're not going to succeed in work. I think what's important is that we remember that as vacancies start to appear in downtown Minneapolis, that the rents will go down. When the rents go down, the properties are worth less. That means that the property tax values are going to shift the county budget onto residents. At this time, we cannot raise taxes. People are struggling, and we need to honor that struggle by doing everything that we can to make things work.
Thank you. You both mentioned housing in your previous responses. Please describe your views on the county's role in addressing housing needs in our community, including for seniors and for individuals experiencing homelessness. And we start with Jeff Lundie.
I think the county needs to get much more aggressive in how that we tackle this. Usually, the county has a history of being the last to the table to get involved in projects, which means that projects no longer come to fruition. As I mentioned, I helped fight to make the second-largest apartment complex become sold to a nonprofit who would continue to support it. I also know that the people living in there feel victimized, because they have people that need to be evicted, because of whether it's crime or other behaviors. And so I know that it's a very difficult issue to parse out, but you can't just say, "No evictions," and continue to let people. I've been at Huntington, I've been in that apartment, talking to residents, feeling what they feel, feeling left out because the landlords are treating them like they're landlords. And so I know that we need to really tackle this there. As mayor, when we had a sex trafficking ring in Brooklyn Park, we built this first teen homeless shelter in a suburb. And we did that because we knew that the root cause of sex trafficking was a threat of homelessness. I don't believe in just talking about stuff, I believe in getting things done, whether it's homeless shelter, or whether it's apartment complex that we fought to make sure it stayed affordable. I will continue to do that work as county commissioner.
Thank you. The same question for Davana Pittman, please.
Yes. The county is very risk averse when it comes to being innovative. And as someone who has worked at the county for a very long time, I understand how decisions are made. I work day after day with staff members who have very innovative ideas, and I often see those ideas go to die or get filtered down by the time they reach the county board. And also, as someone who has struggled with housing, lived in affordable housing programs over many generations, I believe that we need to try more innovative options around contract for deeds, analyzing the empty lots in Hennepin County, and utilizing the Productive Day program, as well as the STS Homes program, which is a construction training program for inmates, to make sure that we are building new homes and affordable housing opportunities so that people who traditionally would not qualify for a mortgage loan would have access to safe and affordable housing.
Thank you. What do you think is unique about District 1 compared with other parts of Hennepin County? And how do you plan to stay connected to resident input and feedback? Davana Pittman?
Yes. District 1 is unique in its diversity and its cultural diversity, and in the way we communicate and celebrate those different cultures. The one thing that I look forward to, I'm sorry, can you please repeat that question? I forgot the last part.
Absolutely. That's okay. What is unique about District 1 compared with other parts of Hennepin County, and how do you plan to stay connected to residents and get their input and feedback?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. I plan to stay connected with the residents in District 1 in very much the same way that I have beginning last year in October. I've knocked on doors, several thousand doors, and talked to many different residents, and so I plan to continue to do that in virtual ways and by incorporating different ways, for me as a county commissioner, to communicate with residents. And that is trying to figure out at least one to two days a month where we actually open up the county board to have conversations with residents and stakeholders. And we've never done that before in District 1, so I believe that that will be a very unique opportunity for us to connect with people in District 1.
Thank you. Jeff Lundie, same question, please.
Can you repeat the question, please?
I sure will. What do you think is unique about District 1 compared with other parts of Hennepin County? How do you plan to stay connected to residents and get their input and feedback?
I think of our district as really gritty, hands-on. We fight hard for things, that we come together. We have so many different cultures and different ideas that I think we're kind of a breeding ground for those kind of new things that could help revolutionize how the county does things. I don't intend to spend much time down at the county board office. I intend to spend my time, like I've done as mayor, out engaging with people, meeting people at coffee, meeting people to talk to different groups, understanding what kind of issues that they're affecting, seeing how that we can do that. I have no intention of just going downtown, working out of an office. For me, it's staying out in the street and working hard with people. I do think that one of the things that we suffer in Northwest Metro is that lack of transportation and lack of investment. And so I'm going to fight hard to make sure that our taxpayer dollars are coming back to our district.
Thank you. What policies would you pursue, if any, to improve social and racial justice for Hennepin County residents? And we'll start with Jeff Lundie.
Yep. So I would continue the work that I've done with Cities United, my brother's keeper, where we try to look at some of the root causes of how a kid, when they're 18, doesn't have the opportunities that people say they should have. And what we've found is, it's not what happens at 18, 16, 14, 12. It happens throughout their life, where there's missed opportunities. We need to focus on the education system, because in Minnesota, we have some of the worst educational gaps. Until we're making sure that we're tackling that, opportunity is not going to be waiting. As mayor, we've done a lot with that, and also after school, to try to tackle what is happening in youth's lives. We have the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, which is actually a partnership between four school districts, two cities, the county and the colleges, to tackle that as from a holistic point of view. How can we all work together to drive outcomes that help residents and youth feel better, feel opportunity, and most importantly, feel a sense of hope? Because without hope, nothing is possible. If we can instill that into youth's lives and make them feel important and listened to, we will see the kind of results that we need to.
Thank you. Same question for Davana Pittman?
Can you repeat the question, please?
I sure can. What policies would you pursue, if any, to improve social and racial justice for Hennepin County residents?
I think one of the first things that I want to do is to continue to make sure that we understand, and that staff members understand, that we have a problem. And sometimes, it's very tough for people to admit where we are with our disparity reduction issues and the gaps in education, housing, employment, transportation, and justice. I think one way that we can really start to close the gap is to make sure that all of our children are trained, and that we have great workforce development programs, because when we close the gap on income, we close the gap on so many other things. And then that also ensures that people are able to live in the communities that they want to live in, and that they have education, and we can begin to start bridging those gaps, which allows people to not see themselves as different than folks that they live, work with, and see every day.
Thank you. See, our next question is, "What would you identify as your priorities for supporting residents and businesses during this COVID-19 pandemic? What measures, if any, would you support to promote public health?" And we start with Davana Pittman.
Yes. The measures that I would look at to promote public health is to first, continue to have conversations with Hennepin Healthcare, and to make sure that we partner with the legislature to ensure that the bills that we have right now are beneficial to the people who live in Hennepin County. And some of the priorities that I look forward to working on is, as I said before, public safety. I am a public safety major. My degree is in law enforcement leadership, and so I want to make sure that we continue to have conversations around relationships with our law enforcement leaders and our community members.
Thank you, Jeff Lundie. Same question, please.
Thank you. So I think first and foremost, we need to get healthcare out of the buildings and out to where the people are. We've seen that the COVID pandemic has hit people who are underserved by and have less access to healthcare. And so they are taking the brunt of this COVID, where they're our home healthcare workers, they're the people out there helping us, and yet, on the other hand, they have the less access to healthcare. So I want to see that, rather than having healthcare sat in a couple buildings, I want to take it out on the road. And Brooklyn Park is an innovator in that. Last night, at our council meeting, we approved the first steps into bringing a mobile public health on-a-bus-go. And the idea was to bring public health to people who could not access it. I've talked about access to transportation as a barrier. Well, if you can't get to the hospital, if you can't get to the doctor to be checked and be checked out, then you're not going to really take the full advantage of the healthcare system we have. So I think Hennepin County needs to start to think differently about how we deliver healthcare, not about bringing people to us, but we need to take it to them. We know where people are and where they are suffering from lack of access to healthcare, and we need to start to do innovative programs like we are doing in Brooklyn Park, taking healthcare to the residents.
Thank you. Let's see. "If the county board was preparing to consider a resolution on a topic that is new to you, what will your process be to educate yourself on that issue?" And we start with Jeff Lundie, please.
Yeah, I think first and foremost, I try to understand, read the information. I also try to reach out to people who might be experts or friends of mine that may have a perspective that may not be represented at the board. I think looking at different things, and we're faced that all the time, is how do you kind of come up with an opinion? Well, you have to cast a vote. When it comes time to that first county meeting, it won't be my first vote. I've taken thousands of votes, I've taken stands on things. I've done it by engaging with people, talking to people, understanding things, and not just talking to the people that agree with me, but actually going out and seeking those people who have different opinions and may have things that I may not believe in, but I might learn from them. And so I think when you practice in the art of going out and talking to people, all types of perspectives, political views, you carry that forward. And so I am quite proud of the work I've done as mayor, to listen to people. Does that mean I always agree with people? No. But it does mean that people will approach me, and they will talk about things that are important. And what you find out, the more you talk to, the more ideas that percolate to the surface, and the better policymaking is.
Thank you. Davana Pittman, same question, please.
Yes. I think that when you're dealing with new policy, new legislation, it is always good to go and talk to people who have been doing the work for a long time, and to also gain perspective from folks who know nothing about what's happening. And what I've seen, since I've been knocking on doors since last November, is that a lot of our residents don't really understand what county commissioners do. They don't know who their legislators are, they don't know who their elected officials are. And so I've spent time trying to help them understand how to get involved in solving many of the crises that we deal with in our communities. And so I want to take their voices to the board. I've also spent time on the ground in the state, focusing on education and other issues that are, you know, that, to make our communities more productive and successful. And so I know that in order for us to move forward and continue to have a very vibrant community, we have to engage our communities and bring those discussions to the county board before we even begin to draft resolutions. Otherwise, we'll end up with the same old same old, and we'll miss so many perspectives. And that is why I believe that we have to have community voice in everything that we do at Hennepin County.
Thank you. Let's see. You both mentioned transit during your opening statements. How would you balance short-term and long-term goals as a county commissioner, for example, related to transit? You have to balance funding and support for things like county roads, bus, light rail transit, bicycle access, pedestrian needs, and other factors, I'm sure. We'll start with Davana Pittman, please.
Yeah, I think we have to start with looking at our capital budget of $414 million, I believe it was the last time I checked, and figure out how we allocate and how we use those funds. It's so important that, again, I'm going to always go back to what the residents want, what they need, and how we sort of make a decision about transit focused on the needs of the community and not just the needs of those who are in the room. For me, when I think about transit, it's always about equity. It's always about our small businesses who are going to either benefit or fail as a result of the decisions we make around transit. When we talk about the sales and use tax, for me, it's really considering that our district, District 1, has very unique needs, and as a strong proponent of the blue line, for me, I would always make sure that what we will need for the blue line, we have.
Thank you. Jeff Lundie, same question, please.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure will. Let's see. So I mentioned that you both talked about transit in your opening statements. How would you balance short-term and long-term goals as a county commissioner? One example related to transit could be balancing funding and support for county roads, bus and light rail transit, bicycle access, pedestrian needs, and the like.
I think what's really important is that we form partnerships. Everybody's going to decline revenue, whether it's cities, county, state, and federal, and so we need to face the fact that if we work together, we make sure our plans are happening at the same time, we can get projects done faster. It's my privilege to represent the metro in lobbying for the FTA, whether it was for all the lines, not just the blue line, but the Southwest, the gold line, the green line, all the different lines of transit that we have. And I understand how it is to go and try to say, "Can you invest federal dollars into our projects?" And that's how you take money that we don't have, and you get more of it. In Brooklyn Park, we've had massive transit investments made by the state and the county, and we've done it by working with them. We've educated them, we made sure everything was ready to go, we had shovel-ready projects so that when funding came about, we were there, ready to move things to fruition. And so I think it's important that we realize, it's not just the county money that's going to determine whether we invest in projects. It's going to be council money, it's going to be state money. And having those relationships and that knowledge and experience about how to lobby effectively will make a difference in whether our budget is 400 million, or that we can make it 800 million.
Thank you. One of our voters wants to know something way outside of policy, so our question is, "What's the last thing that you read for pleasure, rather than for work or for your campaign?" And we start with Jeff Lundie.
I don't know if I've read anything recently. I'm a big Kindle fan, because I love reading, and so I've been a fan of the Arisen series, which is a series, I think in this 2020, the zombie apocalypse thing. So I've read the whole series, I love reading, and for me, I like to be introduced to new books. And so whether it's at our library, or whether it's your Kindle, I just preach and love the idea that if you read, you can self-improve. I'm a history major. I have a master's in Russian history. I ended up working in Japan. I ended up working in technology, which I have had no classes in. I'm now an engineer. And I did it by reading, and so I really stress, more than any skill for anybody or any kid, is if you read well, you have a whole world of knowledge in front of you. And so I try to take as much as I can in. It's a great way to relax and try to escape a little bit, and in 2020, escaping a little bit is a big value.
Thank you. Davana Pittman, same question, please.
Yes. I'm an avid reader. I founded the Minnesota Black Authors Expo in 2017 to focus on reducing educational disparities. I'm also an author. I have published, self-published, three books. My Pretty and Its Ugly Truth, which is my memoir and story of overcoming poverty, and, you know, to become successful, marry someone, and someone who is amazing, and to be able to have those two incomes. And so I like to be able to tell that story, so people understand that it is possible to pull yourself out of poverty with effective supports. And so the last book that I read was my last book, Savannah's Inheritance. And I also get to read a lot of great books by authors who participate in the expo, even books written by children. And so I absolutely love reading, look forward to one day finding time to read for pleasure again.
Thank you very much. Well, since we kind of, since we were talking about books, let's talk about libraries. The county may have to make some tough decisions on potentially closing libraries, perhaps due to COVID or due to other funding factors. What factors should be considered in making those decisions? And we start first with Davana Pittman.
Yes. First, I'll say, I come from a long line of librarians. My grandmother was a librarian, my aunts were librarians, my cousin is a librarian. So I have been gathering information from them as, you know, in terms of the COVID-19 pandemic, and I've also gotten calls from librarians who are very concerned with how they feel they've been brought into the conversations around closures and opening of the library systems. And so I think we need to make sure that we're having very intense and very, lots of conversations, I should say, with folks who work in the libraries. I don't think we can make that conversation, or we can make a determination, without understanding, truly understanding, the perspectives of folks who work in the library. I also think we need to take into consideration what that means to our budget, and to be very clear and very appropriate about how we move forward with our library systems, because we know our children need it, and we have to just make sure that we have fruitful conversations to make a determination.
Thank you. Jeff Lundie, same question, please.
It was my pleasure to be a member of the Hennepin County Library Board. And in that position, I learned more about the intricacies of what goes on behind the library. I think now more than ever, the COVID has rewritten how we interact and how we do things. COVID's not going away. Until we get a vaccine, this is our reality now, kind of like a sad reality show. I think what we need to do, and where my focus is, is on the patrons, is the people who use the library. Libraries are more than just books. And so people have this antiquated view that I just go there, check out books. There's multimedia, there's ability for youth and adults to use internet, there's places for people to better themselves. And so I think we need to rethink, and I think what the county should do is to involve a strategic process to say, "What's the future of libraries?" I don't know the answer. process to say, "What's the future of libraries?" I don't know the answer. I don't think it's physical. I think we're going to have less libraries, but that space will be used differently. Maybe it's just internet access. Maybe it's a place for people to gather, where they discuss ideas and share things. But I think the libraries of old are not the libraries of the future. And if the county really wants to be serious, we should be talking about where are libraries going to be? What are they going to be like in 20 years, not in 2020?
Thank you both. Let's see. What do you view as the county's role in addressing the opioid crisis, and what initiatives would you pursue? And we'll start with Jeff Lundie.
Yeah. I've worked heavily with veterans who I think have suffered a lot with that. And the idea is of education, getting things out there. People see these deaths in families, and suddenly, what was a kid six months later is a person who's being put in the ground because of a funeral. I think we need education to identify those signs. I think the county has the lead role in providing those resources, because the cities don't have those resources. But the cities can identify people who need help. And I think that partnership where the cities are out in the forefront, they're working in the streets, they know who's doing the churches are telling them who may be suffering from this, that people then get county resources. The county needs to be more aggressive. It can't be come downtown or come to one of our centers. It has to be people out in the field, working with and trying to identify people who need help and helping the families. It's not just about the user. The victims of these opioids is also the brothers, the sisters, the moms, the dads, who see a loved one get caught in it. It is a very vicious cycle, and the only way to tackle it is with education and providing resources. There may be lots of resources out there, but people don't know where they are. We need to change that.
Thank you. Davana Pittman, same question, please.
Yes. I grew up in the poor suburb of America, Fort Heights, Illinois. And so I saw the crack addiction firsthand. I've seen the lives of folks who were affected by the crack addiction. And so I think there's a lot to learn from that. And I'm not hearing enough about the types of connections to opiate issues and the crack addiction from way back in the 90s. So I think we need to take a step back and figure out what are some of the resources that were missing back then? What are some of the ways that we could have made better choices and been less risk averse when it came to the crack addiction? I think that there's so much to learn about how we build resources around addiction, whether it's in our communities or whether it's at the county board, how we have strong conversations about policy, and how we, as a county, make sure that we learn from our past.
Thank you. Let's see. What changes, if any, do you suggest for the Hennepin County jail and the criminal justice system? I'm talking here. Davana Pittman, please.
What changes do I?
Suggest for the Hennepin County jail and/or the criminal justice system for Hennepin County?
Yes. I think there are many opportunities for reforming our jails and our systems. And I'll go back to the workforce development programs where at Hennepin County, our STS Homes program and the Productive Day program is a strong opportunity for folks who are in prison to really think through how they plan to make money when they get out, how they plan to access resources and have skills. The STS Homes program has been a great way for people who are incarcerated to gain a skill that they wouldn't have ordinarily gotten. And these are folks who have never held jobs before. So I think we absolutely need to do that. And I know that we need to go back and look at some of the policies in our jails and figure out where we haven't always done a good job. And we haven't always done that. We usually do not like looking at what the county does wrong. And so I think we really need to take a closer look at our policies and figure out how we are adding to some of the systemic challenges in our system.
Jeff Lundie, same question, please.
Yeah, it's been my privilege to serve on the Hennepin County Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee. And on that committee, which is made up of the judges, the police, the defenders, the Department of Corrections, cities, Minneapolis, we've talked a lot about diversionary tactics. The thing that we try to do at the county level has been to divert people so that we reserve the jail for the people who need to be in jail. But people who are suffering from addiction or mental health crisis, jail is not the place for them. And so working and identifying those steps so that we can find people who are really, their root cause is an addiction issue, that we get them the help. Jail is not going to fix an addiction issue. And so I think more as we double down in the idea of mental health and the idea that it's not a stigma, it's an opportunity for us to help someone, that we can start to not fill our jails up just because we don't know what to do, but we actually give people real help. The goal of our criminal justice system should not be to lock people up. There are people who need to be punished for their crimes, but there are people whose only crime is being addicted to something. And I think that we all agree, the worst thing we want to do is put someone in jail for the fact that they're addicted to a substance. What we need to do is get them help.
Thank you. If you knew that a decision you were making would not be popular with the Hennepin County staff, but you believe it is the best decision for the county and its residents, how would you communicate your decision with both staff and residents? And we start with Jeff Lundie, please.
I think I do this on a weekly basis as mayor. And through that time, I've learned one truth, and is that if you're honest with staff and they know where you stand on things, it's easier to have that conversation about where you disagree. If you have had these conversations and they know in advance where you stand, they're not surprised. I think surprise is the worst thing you can do to staff, where they think you believe you're going to vote a certain way, and then you surprise them at the meeting. I think that's ineffective. There is a healthy give and take between a staff and an elected person. And if you're practiced and you've done it long enough, you understand always how to foreshadow, how to give hints, how to tell people, "I can't go there with you, and here's why." And then maybe it's a case of taking that staff out to your community and say, "Here's why it doesn't work. Let's talk to these people." And so sometimes you can change perspectives on what's important by providing that staff person the opportunity to engage with residents and see firsthand, why are you at where you are on an issue? It's because of something you've learned. And share that with them. I look at staff as the most important part of the Hennepin County Board. Who we hire matters.
Thank you, Davana Pittman. Same question, please.
Yeah, yes. First and foremost, there will be decisions that people won't be happy about. And that, to me, I think is going to be the hardest part of this job. But we have to understand that decisions that are made on the county board have to benefit the people who live in Hennepin County. Right now, I work in disparity reduction, and so I bring alignment to all of the departments at Hennepin County in public safety, public works, transportation, issues of education, health, and human services. And so I sit at a table where we have conversations about how we deal with issues and how we roll those out to the community. And so we're already having conversations with the people who work in those departments every day. Hennepin County does not do a great job right now communicating with its residents, but I know that that is one of the top priorities. And so as someone who is currently working on the ground with staff members across the county, I believe that I have already built those strong relationships to be able to communicate about effectiveness of the work that we will do and how and why we do it.
Thank you so much. We have covered a wide range of topics, but clearly, there are many missing. So what issue do you wish that I had asked you about, and if you'd explain your concern or your position with that issue? And we start with Davana Pittman, please.
Yes. Climate change is one that I thought that we would have talked about by now. I'll say that prior to running for public office, I had no idea the different conversations that people were having around Hennepin County about climate change, although we do have lots of conversations at Hennepin County around climate change. And so I really believe that it's important for us to begin this education campaign to make sure that people, all people who live in Hennepin County, understand the importance of climate change and how it affects us in our day-to-day life, and also how it affects people of color, and, you know, how we can use this opportunity to make sure that all of us understands how we can better take care of our planet and live in a community where the air is pure and clean.
Thank you very much. Jeff Lundie, same question, please.
Yeah, I want to talk about barriers. And those are the things that we erect around us that stop people from taking part. I think the county needs to do a much better job of explaining to people how to do things. For a person like myself, a white person, it can be very difficult to understand all the paperwork and the bureaucracy. Now, let's say if I was a person from another country who's a recent, who was new American, maybe has a language barrier, interacting with the county can be very difficult when you have these processes and these things. And there is so much help out there, but people just simply do not know how to access it. I think we need to look at how we work with nonprofit partnerships locally and envelop and to develop those opportunities to try to work with people who are subject matter experts in different cultures and making sure they are our frontline people, to make sure that programs and opportunities for people to access grants and help are clearly communicated with people. And so I think that we undersell the fact that government is a barrier to success. And the more we can remove ourselves from that equation, make things easier for residents and businesses, the more successful we will be as a county.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the candidates for Hennepin County Commissioner, District One, Jeff Lundie and Davana Pittman. We greatly appreciate your participation in our candidate forum. Now, we will take a five-minute break before we begin the forum for the candidates for Robbinsdale Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.